Hello, can you guys hear me? Oh, thanks. You guys must be muted. Okay, alright.
Booty Blues, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Welcome, everybody. We do July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular city council meeting. Please, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ring.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Richardson.
Present.
Mayor Mace.
Present. Item three is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. My nation under God, be visible.
Item four is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Seconded it.
Moved by Counselor Richardson and seconded by Counselor Randall to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Fellas. Aries. Item five is a presentation. Mr. Jim Winterbottom. Waste Connections. He's the district manager. I'll introduce you, Jim. You don't have to introduce you. He's gonna give us a presentation on plastic pollution and recycling modernization act. Mr. Winterbottom.
Mayor. Thanks to the counselors and everybody for getting me a few minutes here tonight. Just wanna talk about what's happening in the world of recycling modernization act. This is a bill that DEQ started back in two thousand and twenty-one. Legislation did approve it as Senate Bill five eighty-two. Which went into effect in two thousand twenty-two. With an implementation date of two thousand twenty-five, July one. I would say that it is more of a dial and a switch. We're gonna see the startup going through two thousand and twenty-seven at the minimum. And what it consists of. Companies that sell into Oregon and are selling packaging and or service ware type items are gonna pay into a producer responsibility organization. And in our case, it's Circular Alliance Association. Circular Action Alliance. The Dalles is a priority A city. Meaning they have residents of greater than four thousand people. And have a need for curbside. At a higher volume than we're currently getting now for recycling. The RMA is to access more Oregonians to recycling. It's also to have a uniform statewide list. Whether you're in the Dalles or Grants Pass. Recyclable items would be the same cities. Currently, that's not the case. So, starting July one, we switched over to statewide collection list. Which I made sure you all had a copy of. The carts that we're talking about in the back there. That's a ninety gallon cart. It's gonna look a little bit different in color. And in information that's contained on the lid. And the the pro in this case will be the ones that buy the carts for the city of the Dalles. Currently, we're at four thousand six hundred and ten customers residential. So, we're looking at just south of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of carts. Assembly and distribution. Some other things that are gonna come along with this are different depots. So, when you come to the Dallas transfer site. There's gonna be a different depot for what's called the pro materials. Which are on the statewide list is what the addition has become. And contains gets point here, I don't wanna speak. So, on the pro list, it's aerosol, steel and aluminum packaging. Aluminum foil. Treaded paper. Single-use liquid fuel. And polyethylene film. Those are gonna be managed by somebody else. We are just gonna house depot to accept that material. We will continue with what we call our single stream. On statewide list, which is gonna be inclusive of the additional items. Companies that sell into Oregon. Are going to be responsible for paying into Oregon to fund this program. And such companies are Walmart. Amazon. Pepsi, Coca-Cola. Ondalize, Kraft Heinz. Those are the big twenties, so to speak. Circular action will be the ones that manage the funds. Nonprofit that was selected by DEQ. And they will distribute out the monies that are requested, program changes and enhancements. Some areas of the state, they'll be getting trucks in addition to carts. Some areas that don't have recycling capabilities now will also be getting transload facilities. That will allow them to get the material to markets in Portland metro area. All of the Murphs, material recovery facilities that we utilize are gonna have to be permitted. Prove an end user is using the material for what its intent is, recycled material. So, with that, I'll kinda take a breath. See if there's any questions at this point.
Mind understand, all the materials be commingled in the one container, the pressurized containers and the other recycling?
No, that'll just be for the curbside list, which is the uniform statewide list. The pressurized containers and the film and the aerosol cans will need to come to a transfer station. For a depot location. The the goal with this program and RMA is to provide Oregonians access to a recycle drop in fifteen miles of their home. Think that's a pretty lofty goal, but we're gonna do our part to help that out, so.
And the pro list, it includes glass, right?
Yeah, and that and that won't affect us because we currently take glass on the side now for the curb. And we will continue to do that, so there won't be a change there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, have a quick question.
Yes, Counselor Ring.
Thank you. You said that businesses selling items in the state or selling items in the state of Oregon will be paying into the into this program or this organization. Does that include companies that are already here in Oregon or companies that are is there a delineation between like manufacturing in the state of Oregon versus manufacturing, say, in Washington across the river? And delivering to consumers in the state of Oregon? Is there a delineation there? I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, there is not at this time. Currently, the company going into Oregon. Got this fee assessed to them July first, and you have the Amazons, the Walmarts, General Mills. They they all sell into Oregon and have for years. This is just as RMA has listed a cost of doing business to increase the recycle programs. Now, there's Oregon's the first state to come up with this and mandate it. But since in California, Washington, Colorado. We may have signed on as well. The idea is to keep manufacturers and producers selling items into the state. Responsible for the recapturing and the recycling of those materials. Hopefully, we're gonna see some packaging shrink in size. Exposable razor and a plastic shell this big is kind of needed at this point, so we'll see what happens.
I have two questions. One is you mentioned after we do a needs assessment. Eligible to receive funding? Be a grant or
Well, the way it's working right now, it's going a little bit slower than we anticipated. For instance, the funding for the roll cart program, I will submit quote from a cart manufacturer. Will then deal with Circular Alliance. Circular Alliance will pay the vendor of the carts directly. Then, once they hit the street, then it'll be the improved collection for our residents.
And you also talk about contamination. The aim is to reduce. How bad of a problem do we have with contamin?
We don't because we use the recycle bins where our drivers are lifting them up at every stop. And they can see what they're flipping in. When it goes to that cart back there that you can't see into. Once the lids open and it dumps into the hopper of the truck, then it's hard to say. There is technology that will take photos of the hoppers, called a hopper cam. And then it'll email photo to the address of where you're sitting in front of their house. Basically, you can set up a program where one, two, three strikes, you're out of the game and you lose your cart possibly. But our recycle and contamination level is very low. Through the Dalles.
Come on, we do have, what would you say is the
Up until July first, it would be non-programmed materials, basically plastics. Garden pots, things that weren't allowed at that time, but now they're gonna be allowed, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Winterbottom?
Seems like a number of years ago. That when a lot of the environmental things came in recycling and whatnot. Then it was found there was no market. Where the things were recycling and they were really just getting all dumped in the same place anyway. Do we have any more faith? This is gonna be any different?
Well, only based on what we've been provided by the end user permitting that DEQ is going through right now. I know we don't have near the options to drop material off like we used to at different locations. So, yeah, I'm hopeful that that's how it's gonna go. That's what we're counting on.
There's just a lot of money being expended to have all these different processes and is it gonna be worth it? Where's it really gonna end up going now? I hope we have some kind of a track on that.
Oh, yeah. We, there's a portal and all of our tickets and destination material where it came from, truck numbers that was hauled in, driver's name. Track and all that.
This is just an Oregon thing.
Thank you.
Who else?
Question in the audience.
You're gonna have to come up here and identify yourself, Karen. Wanted for the record.
Need to identify yourself and then ask your question.
Karen Murray. Hi, Jim. I just wanna know if the, are the carts gonna be labeled? Will there be any labels on it?
Cart will be hot stamped with verbiage of what's acceptable.
Will it be in Spanish too?
They can be. They're still working on that. There's eleven languages that they're working right now.
Okay. And can you tell, tell me again, cuz I couldn't really hear very well back there. What else? What's gonna be different than what it is now? Well, will reg- residential's get those carts?
Yeah.
Wow. And it'll be picked up every other week or?
Every other week.
Okay.
What's different is the materials that are allowed to go in the cart.
Okay, so the garden?
Garden pots, buckets, yogurt containers, different types of plastics. Now gonna be back in the stream.
Will they have to have a number on them?
I would have to look to make sure that
They're gonna ask me those questions.
Sure. I don't believe it says anything about a number. And there we go. I don't believe they go by number. They just go by description.
By what it is?
A pictogram, yeah.
Okay. And will they go to the sorting place in like Clackamas or?
Yeah, yep, they're gonna go to a resort line in Clackamas. And in addition, the aseptic containers are going back into the mix as well.
Wow.
And it doesn't specify numbers on the plastic, so.
Okay, and so you say it's already started, but carts aren't, you said July first or?
Well, July first was implementation. What I said was it started up with a dial, a switch. And hopeful by two thousand twenty-seven, everything is out in place, ready to go statewide. I'm hopeful that the Dalles will be much more in front of that than most of other cities.
When do you anticipate to get carts out here?
Well, I don't wanna say until I turn my quote in.
Within the next year?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And hopefully this year? Maybe? Maybe.
Tight window, but we'll see.
Okay. All right, so sounds like a lot more information will be coming out.
Oh, yeah.
We'll make it easier for laymen to explain.
DEQ has it all on their website. Circular Alliance has a website where everything is laid out. All their presentations they've done statewide are laid out, so.
Circular Alliance.
CAA Oregon.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do you foresee any dramatic increases in fees or, you know, the residents?
I don't at this time.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Winterbottom?
A question, I just, this sounds like a whole new bureaucracy is being created and nothing to do with you. You're just following what the state throws at you, but it's, you know, it's it's an extra cost down the line to everybody who pays taxes.
It is, and you know, however you wanna look at it, if somebody's paying to do business in Oregon, it costs everybody an amount increase because of that.
Thank you for what you do.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jim.
Right.
Okay, item six. Audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. But the three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member. Who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. Issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Yeah, Mr. Kevin Ryan, we're just please give us your name and address and you have three minutes.
Oh, good evening, Council. Thank you for having me tonight, letting me speak. Kevin Ryan. Address is five zero eight West twelfth here in the Dalles. My wife is joining by Zoomer. She's just listening in, Julie Ryan. So, do you, did you all receive my letter? Okay. I don't, I was prepared to read my letter, but since you've all read it, I can just answer questions or I can just quickly do a kind of a bullet point. I'll just do this really quick to get you oriented. Julie and I have been running our bed and breakfast. Now considered short-term rental for eleven years uninterrupted. On last September, September sixth, our, our B, B and V permit expired. I came in on September eleventh to renew our B, B and V permit. That's bread, breakfast and vacation rental permit. Approximately two weeks later or so in early October. Uh, approximately two weeks later or so in early October, I was called by the planning department. And said that they could not process my bed, breakfast, vacation rental renewal. Because they were, uh, phasing out of that permit. So I went down to the planning office to get the new, uh, short-term rental permit application. So I was going to have to submit in a, a new application, short-term rental. So I went down there to get that, uh, early October. My wife and I were going out of state for, uh, several weeks. I came back on, uh, November 13th, or yeah, November 13th, submitted my new application, short-term rental application. And in the process of doing that, um. I was talking with the secretary and I said, uh, how long is this, this permit? Is it, you know, two years, five years? And she said, oh, no, it's, it's a annual renewal. So I said to her, well, does that mean, you know, it's $300 I was paying? There was no pro- prorated amount, so I'm, I'm in there in November. Wanting to get my permit. And she's like, no, you'll have to come back in January and do a renewal. Um, and $300 more. So I said to her, well, I'm, we're, we're out of season, we're not having any rentals now. We, our, our seasons during the summer. I said, we won't have rentals till April. Can I just come back in after January 1? And do the process then and just pay the $300? Said, yeah, that's fine, you can do, you know, she was just agreeing with me, she didn't, she's just the secretary. So I thought, okay, that's what I'll do because we're not hosting anyone. Um, well, little did I know. The process of the new ordinance was going into place. And, uh, I was, I knew that was, uh. Transitioning, I knew there was a new ordinance being considered. But I had no idea certainly of the parking, new parking regulations.
And you're a lot out of time.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you. Um, so. As you read in my letter, uh, we were caught in this, this window. Where I was, uh, I hadn't, uh, gotten a new permit. And now, um, I'm being required to for parking. Of six off-street parking spaces for our, our home is, is physically unable to do that. So I'm asking the, the council to. Look at this, um, I asked for a waiver, we, a, a, a non-conforming existing business waiver. And the only snafu was that we were, we had this window where we were not permitted. So. And, uh, and that basically puts us out of business if, if I don't get permitted.
Any questions for Mr. Ryan? If you had to do it all over again, knowing what you know now. To have renewed back in November?
Absolutely, yeah. No question, um, I had no idea that the. I knew you, I was, I was even, Julie and I were here, we, uh, gave testimony on two of the meetings that you guys had or. The plant, the board had, I guess it was you, the city council. Um, for the new ordinance and we were doing so to help. You know, bring whatever we could bring to that, um, but. Yeah, absolutely, as I said in my letter, we had clear intent to renew our permit from like five days after it expired. And, uh, the only snafu is because of the. We were not permitted at the time, um, of the January 9th, I guess, uh. Uh, Mr. Chandler had said in his correspondence to me. Uh, January 9th, we needed to be permitted by. My permit was already submitted by January 9th, but we weren't in the process or through the process.
Ask our city manager to alert our community development director that, uh, Mr. Ryan would be here and see if he had anything he could, uh, add or shed light on, Mr. Chandler.
Just make sure one thing, you weren't offered a, a prorated amount to get you to the, when the new one would take effect at the first of the year?
No, it was the, the full $300, uh, as of November. And then it would be, uh, another 300 January 1st, so. And we weren't hosting, so I was not going to be operating during that window. And so I thought, why do that? We'll just wait till after January 1.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Chandler?
Yeah, where would you like me to start? Yeah, happy to answer any questions that you have specifically. I think I've communicated with Mr. Ryan, the situation that we have in front of us to the prorated point. We were clear when we adopted the code in 2020, there's no prorating. It's just that's, that's part of it. It, we started it on January 1st, it ends on December 31st, there's no option. I wouldn't have had the option as the director to go outside the city's fee schedule without checking with council ahead of time. As far as giving an exemption on an individual who had maybe an existing operation. Providing any kind of exemption to the code, I would have need to bring that in front of city council as well. I don't have the authority to bend the rules in any way and nor would I do that. So, um, that is why I've actually recommended that Mr. Ryan come and speak to you today. Um, I can't entirely, I probably was not in the office when the communication was had, but, um. I know that yes, when it was submitted in November or it was submitted in, um, September. Whoever the case may be, um, they could have applied for a new license at that time, which would have established themselves in existing short-term rental. I understand $300 hit, um, immediately to only, um, be operating for, for two or three months. But that is the requirement. Um, as far as the, the bed and breakfast permit, the bed and breakfast permit was actually, um, defunct back in 2020. So what that allowed individuals to do is they could continue operating with their bed and breakfast permit. Until it expires after five years, because at that time it was a land use process, so those permits were good for five years from the day it was, um, finalized. Um, so therefore, Mr. Ryan's actually, um, his was one of the latest that we received back five years ago. So it extended to September. But after that, it would have to have been a short-term rental license, no questions asked, the bed and rec for permit is no longer there. Um, I can say, you know, in, in their defense. The old code, the bed and breakfast code did allow for parking on-street parking to go, to go towards your parking allowance. That has been the biggest shift. So we would basically look at, I think the old code said if you had 20 feet of property frontage, that would count as one parking space. So with the old code, parking probably wouldn't have been as much of an issue, but that was the shift that we made in 2020. Was requiring that they were all off-street parking spaces, which is a typical requirement. Um, as far as the parking requirements go, um, those have been in place. Um, for about five years, we had it so that if you had a, um, one bedroom, we gave you credit, you didn't really have to have or credit, if you will. You did not have to provide a parking space if you had one, but we expand, and then after that, the second bedroom does require a space and kind of up from there. Which kind of made it a little flexible for short-term rental operators. If they just have like a little studio in their backyard or a bedroom or something like that, they're not needing to provide that additional parking. But we did receive concerns throughout the years that we've had it in operation. Parking is a concern that we do hear with, we do hear it not necessarily with this accommodation, but we do hear short-term rentals having impact on parking. I think we've discussed those in front of council, you know, many times before. So the shift this time around was to make it so that every single bedroom has to provide a parking space. Um, that was provided to all, you know, we went through that, you know, 18-month process to get to where we're at now. Um, that period of time, we notified the different short-term rental operators, licensed operators at that time. I knew that Mr. Ryan's was going to be expiring, so I went ahead and notified him as well, even though he was not a licensed operator. So he was added to that list. I think he spoke at the city council meetings and in the two letters we provided in September and October. We did provide information about those parking requirements.
I, I have no record of receiving email or mail of that. And I, I thought about this, I just thought probably because my license expired, uh, September 6th. And I don't know when, when that went out, but Josh, if you can verify that I was on that email list, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, no problem. Yeah, I would have went September 13th and October 3rd, both of those listed. Uh, you were on that list, I checked right before the meeting, but I can double check after this if you'd like.
Okay. I don't know what I did.
It was an email address. So, yeah, I could check, um, but we have a going list, you know, every single operator or bed and breakfast is, we have their contact information. Cause that's the way we get ahold of them. So if that information was incorrect from the onset of the application, that's, that was, you know, something that's an ongoing, uh, detail that we missed. Um, he was still being to comply with, I would need to double check what the requirements are. Um, backdating it, um. I mean, if that's council's prerogative, I, you know, I do, I can take direction.
Does that affect the parking requirement?
Um, and that's what I needed to double check on, um. And my apologies, I am not entirely prepared for this question here.
I was just going to mention, this is, this is the public.
For me?
Just saw this letter tonight.
Oh, I brought, I dropped it off earlier in the week, I think on Monday. Okay, okay.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna confirm with you, Mr. Mayor, that this is the public comment portion of the agenda. And so we want to be mindful of that component here. I think the, uh, the, the other element, if there's some, you know, support or direction from council for staff to look into. Over and above the work that we've already done, what other options there may be and what the implications of those may be. Which is backdating an application, even hypothetically, what does that mean in, in other instances? We have numerous STRs throughout the community. So whatever we're doing here and creating some kind of exception or doing, you know, whatever it is we ultimately end up doing, you know, does ripple out and, and that exception, um. Uh, invites more. And so we want to make sure that the, the ordinance and the rules that we have that, that we're firm on, we did go through a very involved process to, to put those in place with substantial. A public comment and public outreach and, uh, those kind of actions weaken those rules if they've taken too often or too frequently.
And I, my suggestions don't mean that I would support.
Yeah, um, I, I think it's a, a, a more appropriate consideration. To look at my business as a non-conforming pre-existing. Uh, uh, business and that there is a provision in the new ordinance for such a business. And I think we are pretty much the definition of that. The only problem was this window of time where. I was not permitted. And so, yeah, as far as the way that I read it, I think that would be the more solid basis on which to make an adjustment. Um, or. Ruling of sorts, um, because I believe we are a non-conforming pre-existing business. And non-conforming is to the current STR ordinance, which requires six off-street parking spaces for our. Our, our home. We have, uh. For previous, we satisfied the parking, uh, regulations when we were under the bed and breakfast vacation rental permit. So.
We were too, uh, interested in concept of a pre-existing non-conforming business with a plant commission for you.
No, this is entirely out of Title X, so it would be a city council decision entirely, yeah.
Well, it seems it would be perhaps appropriate to ask staff to make a recommendation, bring it back. And I think we have a meeting in two weeks and we can make a decision on, uh, on a recommendation.
Okay.
Possible.
Not time.
I, I, I'm a little hesitant to just say, let's drop everything and make a decision right here. Uh, knowing that there are always unintended consequences or ramifications. I'd, I'd like staff time to think about it, I'd like time to think about it, I'd like to see a recommendation, one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, um, it is peak operating season for, for short-term rentals. So, you know, trying to get Mr. Ryan, uh, license as soon as possible would be the goal. Um, that we can see what we can do bandwidth-wise, that's putting everything together in the course of like three or four days. So we can get it out in the packet unless you're all with fine with maybe a supplemental coming out at a later time for a decision to be made. I think that would just at least give us maybe a week or so to think on it instead of trying to get it out the door before the packet goes out. But the essence of time, because council is off in August. I, I would, you know, I'll do my best to make sure we can move that forward before you go to recess in August.
Well, that's just, that's just my thought.
Yeah.
Four other counselors, obviously. Uh, I would be happy for a supplemental if it, uh. Just for the, um. The purpose of getting it expedited and getting, being able to take some action as soon as possible.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Never been a big supporter of no meetings in August, but I would think that. That we have had exceptions and wouldn't want to have a special meeting just for this issue. But I also want to be mindful of. Called the bandwidth. I don't want to have you rush and let something else go that might be at least as important as this. The interest of getting something out before the.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll figure it out.
You're amazed.
Well, McLaughlin.
Uh, Josh, has we had any other requests from any other operators? It, has this created any other hardships you're aware of?
Um, no, I think really this is the biggest one. In all honesty, I think this was something that we were going to have to address a couple of years ago. Um, due to the fact that knowing that the rules changed, but you know, back in 2020. I knew specifically that Mr. Ryan's accommodation was not going to be parking at that time. Um, you know, but it's one of those things that, um. I still stand by the, probably the amount of parking spaces that we need. The reason there, there's so many that are required here is because the code requires one for every bedroom. And then also you need to satisfy both, if you're still using it as your primary residence, you need, still need to satisfy your off-street parking requirements for the residence itself. So in this case, um, it's a four, four-bedroom home, I believe, or bedroom home. That they also live on site, so they need to provide two parking spaces plus the four of those bedrooms. Does probably in this case may seem a little excessive, um, but that is what the requirement is. We have kind of flexed a little bit with Mr. Ryan, he does have a garage in the back, it's not accessed by any driveway or anything. You do have to go over maybe landscaping, drive over the lawn to get there. But he, him and his wife do use it during the winter months to park their vehicles. Um, so, you know, we flexed on that, letting them have those two. Um, so then really kind of coming up with those additional four spaces. Does have a neighbor next door that you may be able to use parking through a parking agreement, that's also a requirement. But I think it was a very long-winded answer for you just now, my apologies.
Well, I have a comment that it's not the intent or my intent. When we review ordinances to create hardships on people operating within our city. So, and, and I don't want to add to, uh, your issue. Um, so my, my feeling on this is that, uh, a two-week review of this. And come back with a recommendation as, gives you some flexibility to look into this.
Yep.
And see if we can find some middle ground. So you can still continue your operation and we can conform with our ordinance change. That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, sounds good.
Also Richardson did. Up tails with what you were suggesting as well, wasn't it? Any objections to also Richardson and McLaughlin's suggestions?
I'd like to be, see it done sooner, but I suppose it's not possible. Like, like any ordinance we're addressed up here. Look at until it gets out there in the real world and starts playing, you know. The, the implications sometimes just don't immediately pop up until something like this with a. 12-year business, it's had no complaints all this time. And then, and he obviously did go in to renew and then was told. Uh, things that he was told, and I'm sure your staff can verify that. That he tried to renew it, that was told he could go ahead and wait, otherwise he'd be paying $300 twice and all that. I, I just think there's a lot of considerations here and.
Yes.
I, I, I just don't want to penalize existing businesses that have done a good job following the rules all these years. And, uh, you know, the sooner we can get it approved, the better, whatever. You know, we normally don't have things come to us under public, uh, participation and then says right in the, in the paragraph that it doesn't get decided on that night, but. I'd make an exception for this one, but I'm just one vote.
But when we pass those ordinances, we also say that it, we want to have the ability to go down the road and to reflect and, and modify if necessary. And so that's still possibly on the docket.
And on that, uh, on that piece there, as far as the future. Maybe there should have been some sort of a, uh, what do you call? maybe there should have been some sort of a, uh, what do you call prorated? We don't have that. Somebody comes in two minute, two months before the, our one and only renewal date, which is now January, I guess. That just doesn't seem fair at all. There should be some kind of, if we're going to reevaluate things in your office, maybe that's one thing we should have brought back to us or looked at as well.
Might be, those might.
Rating the.
Comes with our overall fee schedule and some of the methodology that we have there.
Yeah.
I mean, STR license itself.
Breakfast do primarily have a particular season they deal with, you know, and, and we're in it.
But I also, but I also thank you for, you know, carrying out our intent of the ordinance and, and applying it. That's good for you, but there might be times like in this case where you have to come back to us and reflect. And then we may have to re, um, take a look at this again.
Yep.
Soften it maybe and find some resolution in the middle ground. You did, you did the right thing.
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for considering what, uh, we're going through. And I didn't expect a decision tonight, so I appreciate your prudence and just reviewing this over the next couple of weeks. Just quickly a feedback, um, I'm not sure that, uh, all of the other, uh, short-term rentals have their parking arrangements have actually been verified. We, mine had extra scrutiny because of, I was working with the permitting office for about four months and things for different reasons, I believe, in the office weren't getting attended to. So finally in May, and I felt nervous and anxious because our, our rental season was upon us. I specifically went in and asked for Josh to take over our process because I'd submitted my permit application in January and the woman that was helping me just was not returning my calls, not returning emails. So I just said, I need you, Josh, to, to get this started or do what you need to do. And then subsequently, I think our situation got more scrutiny in a review. But I don't think, um, I'm not sure, you can ask, uh, Mr. Chandler, but uh, I don't think other people's, uh, parking arrangements have been checked and verified. And, uh, and lastly, I'll just say the requirement now as it exists is, um, pretty unrealistic as far as an operation point of view. I mean, we have a, a four-bedroom home. How are we going to have six off-street parking spaces? Thank you for your consideration tonight and hearing this out.
Now, do you have anything else before we move on?
Uh, yeah, I don't want to nitpick. We, we verify every single application that comes through the door. I've been out on a property before an individual showed me a parking lot or a parking space on their site plan. You couldn't even access it from an abandoned alleyway. We do check our parking spaces, so it's one of the scrutiny. My complete apologies for the delay that you received in this process. So I, I take that a hundred percent on me. So, um, not the additional scrutiny, but, um, just the apologies on the delay.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Moving on. City managers report, Mr. Klebs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a couple of things here. I attended the Oregon City County Managers Association Summer Conference last week, where I also serve as a board member. Uh, this is one of, uh, the best and one of my, uh, favorite conferences to attend. About a hundred, 150 city managers from around the state, uh, get together for three or four days. And it's, um, there's a lot of good sessions, a lot of good speakers and excellent networking and exploration of what cities do, what we're trying to figure out. Um, you know, the Dallas is not unique in some of the challenges and opportunities we have. Um, in some ways we do, uh, we are, but, um, you know, we're facing a lot of the same challenges around the state. So that's just a really great, um, conference to go to. And one of the major discussion points at the board was, you know, exploring, um, what we call a senior advisors program and, and how we provide support, uh, to new and developing city managers and how to best, uh, support, uh, the profession, managers in transition and, uh, make, making sure that we're capturing, you know, experience and knowledge and, and transferring it down. So good conversation on that front. As you, uh, may know or likely know, it's a pretty, uh, it was a pretty busy session, uh, at Salem. Uh, just wanted to touch upon a couple of the bills, uh, that passed and failed. This is, uh, some of the conversation we had at the conference, but also our economic development officer is tracking some of these bills. Um, one of the interesting ones was about transient lodging tax and, uh, a bill to increase some of the flexibility for how those monies are used. As the council may recall, there's a 70-30 split for transient lodging tax after 2003. 70% goes to tourism, 30% goes to the general fund. If you establish your TLT prior to 2003, there can be a different split. And so in the city here, it's roughly 55 and 45. A bill that nearly passed and died in a Senate committee, I believe, flipped that split to 40% tourism, 60% a general fund city operations. And that was a very, um, dramatic shift and a conversation that cities and counties have really been pushing for, uh, for, for many, many years. And so to see it go as far as it did was very surprising to most and frustrating, uh, that it died in a Senate committee. The, the League of Oregon Cities and OCCMA, the league in particular, are tracking that and will push it again in the next session. The council knows that the, uh, big transportation bill did not pass. And so one of the things I wanted to just make sure everybody was aware of are some of the impacts to ODOT uh, in winter weather operations and the loss of some ODOT positions within Wasco County that may impact service to our constituents. A bill, uh, establishing unemployment benefits to striking workers passed, which may have implications, uh, to the city's budget. Um, a review of housing permits and the timelines associated with it was tightened or sped up, which may have impacts to the community development departments workload and bandwidth. And, uh, the Hood River White Salmon Oregon Bridge funding component, uh, was secured as matching, uh, for Washington State. There were many other bills that passed and some others that failed, but those are some of the highlights I just wanted to bring to your attention. And then finally, I had another follow-up meeting with Mr. Canal and Commissioner Zoller from Clickittack County to continue our work on regards to the airport, most notably the joint operating agreement. Uh, we have a concept that we're exploring and has garnered general support. So we're going to be fleshing that out, bringing more information back to the commission and the council for approval once we've answered some of the questions and, and, and put a little bit more meat on the bones to this concept framework. So that's, um, moving slowly, but moving in the right direction, I hope, and, uh, more to come in the coming months. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Klebs? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, uh, item eight, city council reports. We'll start with Council Runyon.
About a week or so ago, I had a, uh, opportunity to speak with our state Senator Dan Bonham and, uh, our representative Jeff Alfred about several of the items that, uh, our city manager went over. And then since then, I've seen the threats from our governor about snow removal in eastern Oregon and that sort of thing. But no, uh, no comment about how changes will affect, uh, the valley and the voters in the large metro areas. So I'm hoping that we get some pressure on this situation. I know they're asking for, she's asking for a special session and some other things, but, um, I don't know why, um, it seems like there's a number of issues that are being paid for in the state of Oregon that have nothing to do with roads. It could be deleted or reduced and have plenty of, of money for the highways, is my comment. 24th of June, uh, uh, Community Outreach Team meeting. But the college mayor was there and, uh, Matthew was there, our city manager. And, uh, the county administrative officer was there and others from the PUD and School District and Board of the Dells, all participating. There was a briefing session with counselors and we all attended different meetings on that, on things ahead of us in the Dells. Without a quorum, I might add, just a briefing session with one or two at a time. The 26th, a Q Life meeting on, uh, internet, uh, for the area and looking at the county and also the, uh, continued growth of the partnership with Northern Wasco County PUD, um, which is going to be very beneficial, I think, to the community long-term as far as, uh, internet connection, both locally within the city limits and elsewhere. And on July 4th, I rode in my first mayor's car parade. I hadn't done that before and, and, uh, that was an interesting day. We had a lot of fun and wore our arms out throwing candy, which I still don't know if that's legal or not to have candy anymore. At one time we were told we couldn't do that, but we had a good time.
Thank you, Council Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as brief as I can, I have an urban renewal meeting tomorrow. So if anyone has thoughts on that, please send them my way. Federal Plaza Committee, Federal Street Plaza Committee, uh, meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I think one, uh, coming up. You'll see we have an action item on the, uh, agenda tonight for that. I'll also see that, um, being proposed for an appointment to Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, the nonprofit that, uh, helps to bring, um, low-income housing to the area. Um, there's a couple of projects and, and much, much, uh, need both for low income and, and obviously, uh, sort of a variety of other, um, socioeconomic levels, uh, housing, um, in our area. See, I started communications with our new assistant city manager, HR director and counselor Ring. Look at revising and improving our evaluation process for city manager and attorney and, uh, stay tuned. I'm hoping that we'll have a couple of productive conversations and make really good use of, um, uh, Ms. Fraley's school set here. And then, uh, probably early fall. And last but not least, um, a thought just to kind of put out there, which is though it's not a traditional area of work for our city, I do feel our city probably needs to be engaged in some level of conversation with wildfire mitigation. We have a lot of, uh, neighborhoods that are on the margins of town, that is on the periphery and, uh, subject to, uh, potential exposure to wildfire. We've seen obviously locally, the really dramatic and, and terrible effects that can have on a, on a community in Rowena. I'll say just two years ago, we came very close to losing a, a mobile home park on the far east end of town. They were just very, very fortunate that that wasn't a, a much more terrible, uh, event. That's sort of our new reality. You know, entire neighborhoods, entire communities have, uh, have seen destruction from wildfire in the last 10 or 15 years. All of the western states, all of the Canada, even in Hawaii, we've seen, uh, communities burn up. And I think it's probably something we need to add to our list to be thoughtful about. I'm not sure how best we engage with partners on that. County I know is engaged in wildfire mitigation, really getting started on that. And there's also our, uh, Mid-Columbia Fire, um, other entities. So I don't have a great answer, but I do think it's something, a conversation we need to really get engaged with. Perhaps it's something for the community outreach team to discuss even. All right, that's my two cents. I think we need to get in the game on that.
Disagreement here. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Uh, Counselor Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, June 25th, I met with the, uh, Household Hazardous Waste Steering Committee, which is made up of the three counties, Wasco, Hood River and, uh, Berman. June 30th, I attended the briefing with, uh, yourself, the city manager, city attorney and, uh, counselor Ring. And on July 4th, I also participated in the, uh, the annual event, the parade, uh, which seems to be gaining some momentum from the last couple of years. So that's my report.
Thank you. Counselor McLaughlin.
To Mayor Mays. Last Friday, I attended a airport meeting. And then we had, uh, July 4th parade. I was in with Mayor Hayes and, uh, Michener or Counselor Runyon and Scott Randall, who rode in the back of the pickup in the rain. Yeah, backwards. Rule is on tomorrow.
Yeah.
And, uh, I've been working with emergency restoration through Wasco County and Maqued to see about organizing the donations, finding, um, the method of distribution and we're working on that. And then, uh, next or Wednesday at one o'clock, uh, Rebecca Kimball is going to be sworn in as an officer. So I plan on being there. All right, that's my report for this week.
Counselor Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, uh, Counselor Richardson mentioned earlier, there was a federal street plaza meeting, um, earlier in the month. I also was at the briefing session that Counselor Randall mentioned earlier. And I plan to, uh, be in touch with the Dallas Sister Cities, uh, as they've returned from their, um, their annual trip to Yoshi City in Japan. And they'll be preparing for that city to come to the Dells, uh, later this year.
Thank you. As far as my report goes, I did a radio interview with Mark Bailey on, uh, KACI on June 24th. Uh, the Community Outreach Team, the Federal Street Plaza Committee and the parade have already been mentioned. Though I will add that I was a judge at the parade and, uh, gave the mayor's award to a, the floats. June 26th, I attended an interesting meeting at the Civic Auditorium. Uh, residents of the Rowena area were there at the invitation of a law firm from Spokane, Washington, who, uh, pitched to, uh, join their S-action suit against the Union Pacific Railroad. It was a very interesting meeting. June 30th, I attended the John Baker's retirement luncheon, Public Works Department. Or I believe it was 39 years of service to the city. And on July the 3rd, I, uh, attended a yard of the month celebration on East 7th Street for Marsha Morrison's wonderful and beautiful vineyard. Just was, received a phone call last week that Darcy Long, who has now been elected to the Columbia Gorge Community College Board of Directors has resigned, now has to resign, uh, from our urban renewal. So the meetings fall on the same day. She did not entertain suggestion by me that she quit the community college board. And finally, I'm looking for members of the Beautification and Tree Committee. So if anybody, for example, sitting in the back row, would like to volunteer for our Beautification and Tree Committee. I'm looking for people, uh, good people. And if you're not interested, please spread the word around town. Uh, it's a great committee who has done a lot of great work. With that, uh, we'll move on. Item nine is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we got five items on the consent agenda. First, approval of the June 23rd city council meeting minutes. Second, approving the authorization to purchase three engineered metal buildings for the public works fleet. Third, authorization to declare the surplus of two police vehicles. Fourth, a resolution concurring with my appointments of Tom Jim, Tom Jimay to the Historic Landmarks Commission and Jorge Barragon to the Federal Street Plaza Ad-Hoc Committee. And finally, uh, a resolution, uh, concurring with my appointment of Dan Richardson to the Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation Board of Directors. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor Mays, I so move to accept the, uh, consent agenda as presented.
Or second?
I'll second.
The move by Counselor McLaughlin and seconded by Counselor Ring to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself on this vote.
Counselor Richardson is abstaining from this vote for obvious reasons. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries four to nothing. Item 10A is a public hearing. That was the time specified for the city council to conduct a legislative public hearing to consider the following matter. Consideration of zoning ordinance amendment application number 110-25 and comprehensive plan amendment application number 56-25, City of the Dells. Recommendation to the city council for adoption of amendments to the comprehensive plan and Title X of the Dallas Municipal Code to comply with FEMA's 2024 pre-implementation. and Title 10 of the Dells Municipal Code to comply with FEMA's 2024 Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures Mandate and Updated Flood Plane Development Standards. This hearing requires the City Council to consider explanation of the relevant criteria, standards, policies, and laws, and statement of basic facts relied upon in rendering the decision, the evidence in the record. Criteria on which the City Council will base its consideration of this matter are found in the City Comprehensive Plan, Dells Municipal Code Title 10, and the staff report. Anyone who wishes to testify must be recognized by me before testifying. And I recognize you, please proceed to the microphone, state your name and mailing address for the record. Hearing is also required to be recorded. Generally, the public hearing procedure will go as follows. Prior to the public hearing, we will begin with the staff report and any questions with the City Council they have for the staff. Next, I will ask for testimony from anyone who wishes to offer relevant testimony or ask relevant questions on this matter, limited to no more than three minutes per testifier. After all the public testimony, the staff will have an opportunity to respond. And this process has been concluded. I will close the public hearing, and the City Council will deliberate toward a decision. Expedite the hearing. The counselors may ask questions of persons as they testify, and I may exclude or limit cumulative, repetitious, or immaterial testimony consistent with City Council's rules. During the hearing, some important standards apply. First, if you testify, please address your testimony to the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes applies to the decision, the Comprehensive Plan, or the Dells Municipal Code Title 10. Second, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to allow the commissioners, council members, and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue prohibits an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Third, a failure to participate in this public hearing, either orally or in writing, recludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. These are the rules. Are there any questions? Any members of the City Council wish to make any conflict of interest disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this matter because of possible financial gain resulting from the legislative action? Being none? I'll open the public hearing. If please have a staff report.
Evening, Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. One second here while I share my screen for you. As mentioned, the application in front of you is zoning ordinance amendment 110-25 and then Comprehensive Plan Amendment 56-25. The City of the Dells is the applicant. The properties that this impacts are all properties within the urban growth boundary located within a special flood hazard area. Or special hazard flood area. The issue here, this is consideration of general ordinance number 25-114-1414, which is an ordinance amending the Dallas Comprehensive Plan and Title 10 of the Dallas Municipal Code. So the purpose of these amendments is the adoption of local floodplain regulations to federal standards. This, the purpose here is that they comply with FEMA's 2024 Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures. So PICOM. It's also to ensure continued participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. We're going to be throwing a lot of acronyms out at you throughout this entire process here. So don't hesitate to reach out if you need any clarification along the way. So the PICOM update, a little bit of history behind it. July 2024, FEMA Region 10 issued a mandate for compliance of this no net loss standard. This was required by July 31st, 2025. It's intended to ensure compliance with the Endangered Species Act. And this mandate applies to 239 Oregon communities. So if you remember back to our meeting in November, we were required, the city was required to choose one of three compliance measures by December 1st. We did that. We selected the Model Code Ordinance, which we're moving through and discussing this evening. This is a map of the impacted area in Oregon. So some background that led up to the PICOM. So in 2009, FEMA was sued for failing to consult the National Marine Fisheries Service on the impacts that the NFIP has on endangered species. In 2016, FEMA settled those lawsuits. With the issuing, following that, issuing what's known as the BIOP, which identified the NFIP's threat to ESA-listed species and the recommended mitigation that FEMA would take. Then in 2023, FEMA was once again sued by environmentalists for a delayed BIOP implementation. And then in 2024, FEMA announced the PICOM to bridge the gap until the full BIOP implementation is set to take place in 2027. So long story short, there was a lot of holding up on FEMA's end resulting and not addressing the issues that they were called out on. And those have now trickled down to the Oregon communities, as I mentioned. The PICOM options, there's three here. The Model Ordinance, which is adopting the ordinance, which integrates the ESA requirements into local land use code. There's the Permit by Permit, which is, requires floodplain development permits to include a habitat assessment and a mitigation plan, which demonstrates no net loss. Then there's the Prohibition, which is a ban of all development in designated flood areas. You can imagine this has, this would have quite an impact on the community here. November 25th, the City Council selected the implementation of the Model Ordinance. One thing to point out here is the Model Ordinance effectively has a permit by permit baked into it. So there was an option for the community to just go with the permit by permit option. We went the Model Ordinance. A couple of things playing into that is the city has a very old flood code at this point. Our intent was to adopt the Model Ordinance when our new maps were being updated. But this happened, the maps were delayed, this happened before. So we were already going to be adopting the Model Ordinance. We're just doing it a little sooner than we had expected. So Model Ordinance is the regulatory template for floodplain standards. In 2020, FEMA came out with a Model Ordinance. This is really provides that guidance for community regulations when it comes to development standards. Then in 2024, this model, their update to this Model Ordinance was adding Section 6. I won't really get into Section 6, but that and the whole entire section is what talks about no net loss standards. So it's the one, all the other sections of the Model Ordinance touch on development. Yep, question?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? It's one slide back. Doesn't sound like this is where we're going to go, but I just want to be clear here. Says prohibition ban on new development in designated floodplain areas, which you pointed out would be devastating to our community. But it doesn't just mean new development. It could be an existing business wanting to rebuild or add to their building. They would be denied as well.
Yep, yep, expansions to your footprint, exactly. There's, there's routine maintenance that doesn't require, you know, floodplain code, but that's a very good point. Yeah, an expansion to a building that you already have. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. So our firm updates. So there are two distinct projects that are, that are happening right now that the city has been working on over the past decade. And one is the Flood Code Ordinance, which we're discussing this evening. The other is the update to the flood insurance rate maps. Those are known as firms. We currently use a 1984 map. That is the last time those maps were updated. So FEMA started the process of updating our maps in 2014. It is a very long process. We're still not there yet. Preliminary maps were issued in 2023. There was a 90-day comment and appeal period. We did receive some comments. I, the city actually submitted comment to FEMA. With those, with the feedback that was received, it led to further revisions. Then they took those prelim maps, kind of retracted them, reworked them, remodeled them. And now these new prelim maps, they are out, they are on our website, but we haven't sent them out for this, this new 90-day appeal period. And the thing, we will send out the notification to all property owners when this happens. But this is only going to be a change to Mill and Chenoweth Creek. So when they remodeled everything, the Mill and Chenoweth Creek areas were those that have received comments. So when we do the 90-day appeal period again, or comment period, only properties that are lying on Mill and Chenoweth Creeks will be able to comment in. And it is expected that these maps will be adopted in 2026. And the thing to keep in mind that makes it a little more difficult for us to implement flood code requirements is that these 1984 maps remain in place until the new maps are finalized. So we do have to rely on this, this older information, if you will, until these maps are updated. So to show a difference here, this is your, I'm going to show a couple comparisons of the maps. I won't, don't get too far off onto it because we are discussing the code update, not so much the maps themselves. But to show you what we're looking at, what we've been working at, 1984 and the 2026, until we zoom into some areas, which I'll get in, which I'll get into, you will see some significant changes around town. As you can imagine, the modeling that was used from 1984 to 2026 is a whole nother world. So we're actually able to truly monitor the, everything that goes into the stream, the slopes, the, all the gauges throughout the entire system. Everything's a bit more 3D now compared to what was done back in 1984. So in looking at some of the areas, I did want to point out areas that we saw some changes to, some big changes to. Looking at the Chenoweth Creek side of things, there is the area right there just north of Irvine Street that we saw that area, the floodplain has really expanded in that area as it kind of winds through along the edge of the urban growth boundary there. Another notable, and my apologies, you really have to zoom in to kind of get the full perspective here. But the other notable here is Mill Creek. You'll see in the downtown area, up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see the lack of blue on the 1984 map compared to all the blue in the 2026 map. So that shows that 2026, of course, that is what the new flood map is showing of our downtown area, which is impacts, impacts multiple city blocks in our downtown. And the thing to keep in mind is, you know, I think that there are, there's historical significance behind it because of the 1996 flood. There was a downtown that was impacted by floodwaters, mostly because there is a pinch point at the Mill Creek Tunnel. That tunnel is not large enough to allow water to come through in a normal flooding event. And then you add the debris that can back up at that tunnel, just making the matter that much worse. And then in our Lone Pine area is one of our newer residential areas in town. As you can see on the screen here, this area here is South Shore, we call it, South Shore Lane, South Shore Avenue. There's a lot of residential development there. If you look over on this side, most of it was really inundated by the floodwaters. But what they've done, when they developed Lone Pine, of course, they brought in a substantial amount of fill. So they brought those areas above the, what's called the base flood elevation. So there's actually, I kind of showed you the bad areas with Chenoweth and Mill Creek. We actually saw some of the properties out there in Lone Pine that are coming outside of the floodplain. So, you know, to take the, take the bad with the good, I guess, in the case here that any property that may have been encroaching into the floodplain, they may actually start to see some relief from the requirements. So noticing, I won't go through all of this, but there is some noticing that went along with this process. We notified FEMA back in December. We submitted this request to DLCD, which is required of all land use changes. And May, May 1st, May 15th, we sent the information to FEMA Region 10. Thing to note here, no surprise from DLCD because they're really just going to pinpoint the areas of non-clear and objective standards whenever land use codes come along, come across their plate. But, you know, thing to comment here, to this day, still no comment from either agency on what, on our proposed changes. May 16th, we sent out ballot measure 56 notices to all current and future mapped properties. The reason we did this, we are only required to send it to those individuals in our 1984 map. But in abundance of caution for the 2026, we want to let people know that here coming up soon, you will be in a floodplain. So therefore, these new requirements will be required of you when those maps are changed. So just a little bit of heads up to those individuals. And then May 21st and June 25th, there were notices both sent in the Columbia Gorge News. And to date, we did receive some comments at the Planning Commission, verbal comments. Those are included in the minutes. But to date, we've only received just the one written comment. And it's included as Exhibit 5, or excuse me, Exhibit F in your packet. So these are the areas that we'll touch on. I'm not going to go through every single section of the comp plan or the municipal code, but these are the areas that saw a change with these updates. The overview here, it repeals the outdated provisions that we currently have. Establishes new permit requirements, far more elaborate than what they used to be. It requires an assessment of this no net loss standard, which needs to be conducted by a qualified professional. It updates enforcement and review criteria, changes terminologies. It adds a new section in our flood code for variances. And also there's a requirement for elevation certificates and a clear determination of your base flood elevation. That base flood elevation is big when we're looking at flood code requirements because effectively you must elevate your, your finished floor of habitable spaces, one foot above the base flood elevation. So making sure that that information is clearly delineated on plans is extremely important for us to appropriately address flood permits. Probably the, the talking point, I would say, of these amendments is the no net loss standards. I think a lot of people can probably agree that everything that was included in the 2020 Model Ordinance, we're talking about development standards, you know, making sure that properties or floors are elevated above that base flood elevation. Then the no net loss standards touches on, specifically touches on environmental. And it's an environmental-focused standard that was added to the Model Ordinance. It was introduced with limited coordination with Oregon agencies, you know. So this was a federal mandate that came down. Of course, we have clear and objective standards here. The state of Oregon, land use in the state of Oregon is very unique. But there was little coordination with FEMA, as you can see now, there's very little coordination with FEMA. So, and looking at them, it conflicts with Oregon's clear and objective standards. This has been something that's been echoed through communities around the state. Some of these key concerns, there's the risk to regulatory takings claims. There's an impact on housing production. And then there's also, it's an unfunded mandate that's burdening local government. So as you know, this has been something that we had intended on updating our code, but we weren't intending on doing it this quick. So that's something that, you know, all these kind of sum up these new no net loss standards. So the city, in looking at that, the city in these new standards worked with Barry Elsner and Hammond, which is our land, our outside legal counsel. On these new standards, the goal was to maintain FEMA's compliance while upholding Oregon land use law. But they created a path that is, I'll refer to as Option 2. Forget all the other options we talked about earlier, the one through three with PICOM. This Option 2 is really just something referred, referred to by their team. What it does is it shifts the compliance burden from the city to the applicants. So FEMA, what they had in their Model Ordinance was that an application for a habitat assessment would be submitted to the city, and then the city would oversee the review of that habitat assessment. So what this does is it pushes that back on the applicant to make sure that they are hiring the appropriate individual. And when it comes into the city, we check the box. That's a clear and objective standard. You submitted this habitat assessment, we are not reviewing it, but you did comply with what FEMA had laid out in their Model Ordinance. And it, you know, I relate it to, they're not exactly the same, but I do relate it to, it's one additional step that's required of floodplain properties, similar to the additional step of having, step of having a geologic hazard study if you're in a geo-hazard zone. So it's one additional step that you do have to add to your permit. So there is some likeness in what we already have in our code. So looking at this Option 2, this, which is the one proposed by Barry Elsner, and I think I may have lost over it, but what we are proposing is we have basically taken FEMA's Model Code, Section 6, their no net loss standards, we struck them out entirely, and we worked with outside counsel. And we had them, worked with them, and they drafted up what they believe meets FEMA's intent and still meets clear and objective standards. So advantages here is that aligns with Oregon legal standards, minimizes the city's financial and administrative burden, which means we are not hiring an individual to come in and review our habitat assessments. It maintains FEMA's conservation goals, which they set out for when they adopted the known at law standards and reduces Luba risk because you're taking away a clear and object, you know, clear and objective standards, effectively a habitat assessment comes in. There's a lot of unknown for the developer of what is all going to be required, what conditions are going to be placed on an individual by the city taking it in, checking the box, letting them know you, you met that, we can clearly say it's clear and objective. You meet it, you're moving forward to the next stage of your building permit process. Challenge that we do have with it is that it hasn't been formally approved by FEMA. As I mentioned, the lights are off, nobody's home. So we haven't really gotten a call back on this proposal that we're bringing front of them. Barry Elsner, and when I chatted with them in May, they had tried making communication with FEMA as well since January, multiple months, and they couldn't get a hold of anyone. So option two has not been tested by the federal government, but we believe it's the best way forward. There are future changes that could impact. We do know that there will be changes in 2027 when the actual implementation of the biop comes in. And then also something I cannot, I don't want to sugarcoat it and I can't emphasize it enough, there's going to be an increased app, there's going to be increased fees. And it could, um, overall an impact to housing affordability. So at the planning commission meeting on June 6th, everything that was discussed here, you know, we provided basically the same presentation to them. Of course, there's a concern of a financial burden. There was calls for a clearer guidance, simpler permitting, better outreach. I do, I would agree, it feels rushed, the process has felt rushed. Here we are, um, one year from the time we found out that this was a requirement. We had to go through the entire process. There were requests at that time to, to delay adoption of this, um, of these codes, of this code. An emphasis on balancing the NFIP compliance with minimizing disruption overall to development and the shared need for technical support and public education. I think that emphasizes the fact that this information has been ever changing with FEMA as well. We sat through, our team sat through different meetings and they were informing us that it's always best to attend the first meeting and the last meeting, because in that period of time, information could change. Meanwhile, they're pushing that information out for us to go through an adoption process on. So, um, overall, pretty frustrating for the people that have to implement this as it is for the approving authority this evening. Staff's response to that, we do acknowledge the financial and clerical, uh, clarity concerns here. It hasn't been clear, we're doing the best with the information that we have. There hasn't been any changes that we are aware of to the information, the model ordinance that have come out now. And it has been reviewed thoroughly by our team. We've had some land use consultant assist with us as well as working with outside council on it. So we, we've looked it over and we've, we'd have dotted our eyes and crossed the Ts. We did exceed, you know, notification requirements. We wanted to provide, as I mentioned earlier, even individuals that are maybe not currently in the floodplain. We wanted to send them information in the event that they want to build a house in a year on that property. They know that these are going to be the new requirements and they're not going to be surprised when they come in a year from now. We committed to expanding technical support and improving, improving guidance. I'll get to that here in one second. And we did, you know, emphasize, which will emphasize this evening, the urgency of adopting it to avoid any implement, 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 implications, excuse me, of NFIP eligibility. So thing I wanted to touch base, this went live like last week. I think we've, um, nailed everything down, but this is a website. When, when we, since we had the two, uh, two projects that are currently going on, we wanted to, to be very clear and provide a lot of background for people to know where, you know, the steps, steps are, where we're at with everything. So this webpage here on the city's website, and we were calling our, um, our floodplain, what is it, hub? And it's, provides you the information on these, these code updates, provides you with the story map, which is very helpful, interactive, um, platform. I know it's a webpage effectively that you can walk through and learn more about everything to do with how these maps are created, insurance information. There's even a section on there where you can compare the 1984 map to the 2026 map. So I think it's a really beneficial thing. We just completed, it went up today, a how-to guide for property owners. This is going to be for people going forward. This isn't just for tonight, this isn't just for these new codes. This is for an individual, even five years from now, they could go to the website, they could see what is required to, to develop in a floodplain. So that was up there. A list of qualified contractors, as I touched on, to complete a habitat assessment, you need to have qualified, uh, qualified contractor do the work. So there's a list online now, it's about 70 different consultants that can provide this assistance throughout the state. And then it's also just going to be the one stop shop for, you know, the updates throughout the process that we have. And with that, um, staff's recommendation is to move general ordinance number two, five dash one, four, one, four, an ordinance amending the Dallas Comprehensive Plan, Title 10, the Dallas Municipal Code, to comply with FEMA's 2024 pick them mandate. An updated floodplain development standards based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the Agenda Staff Report. My title only, as presented. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Happy?
She said? Yes. I've come prepared, hopefully.
Sorry, where's the floodplain hub? Oh, there it is, never mind. See it?
Hi, it's the city council, it's not the time for replying or deliberating, this comes later in the public hearing. Time for, to ask the staff questions, any questions for?
Yeah.
What's her run in?
So, uh, option two, which seems like the way to go and whatnot, but I see that, you know, ideally it saves the city some money, but puts that cost back now on the developer. And then that could cause some severe problems down the road, depending on the development and where it is and what they need to do. It may cause the development not to happen at all. This is one of those things like we talked about basically with the, uh, the gentleman with the bed and breakfast earlier, that we may not know the problems with this until we actually go through it.
Right.
And changes would have to be made, hopefully, to make it work. Also that FEMA has not formally approved this alternative. And so future amendments to federal regulations could impose more restrictive standards, according to documents we were given. And moreover, the added cost to applicants may present challenges for certain development types, particularly housing. So it may be the best way right now for us to go forward, but it may, may all be thrown back in our face if they ever answer the phone.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a risk that we do take. Yeah, it's a risk that the city takes. As far as cost savings, no matter what, an individual would have to pay the money for the assessment. It's, I think, you know, it, it would then just come to making sure that the city's not responsible for that compliance, for meeting FEMA's compliance.
Just put it on the record, I'm just concerned because of our, our location to the river and the businesses that are in that floodplain and businesses that maybe aren't now, but will be in, insurance will be a situation. And a cost and whatnot, uh, that, you know, we, we just need to be, well, we're being forthright and doing the best we can do, but it just seems like it's, there's an open door that we really don't have the answers to yet. And my concern is, you know, the cost to our community and our, our individual businesses that now are thrown into an area that, just even to add on something to their business, they may be in a position, they can't do it and may have to relocate or leave our community.
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge impact, it really is.
That's, that's all, there's no answer there, it's just statements.
Also ring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding, I, I, I would echo Counselor Runyon's comments as well, but I also, uh, for clarification, I want to be, I want to make sure that I have this straight in my head. One of the reasons that we need to do this that I, even though as, as Counselor Runyon mentioned, and I think we all recognize that this is a bit of a messy process. There's a little bit of a chicken in the egg, uh, with this, because we don't have the new floodplain maps approved from FEMA. And in like, even though we don't have the maps, we need to move forward with the adoption of this ordinance. And doing so, here's the important part, I think, I want to make sure that I, again, that I have this correct. If, if we stop and think about the cost of not doing this this evening, the cost of not doing this this evening is that we put, we put, uh, further development at risk because, um, it could, not saying that it would, but it could, um, jeopardize future develop, current future developments in the city of the DOWLS with regard to the national floodplain insurance. Is that accurate?
That's, that's correct, yes. That was, that was one of the implement, that was one of the issues that came up with, um, basically the threat from FEMA, if these aren't adopted.
Yeah, it was just kind of the chicken and egg problem. And my thinking is, we have to, we have to do something. We don't have, we don't, we, we're working with less than all the information we need to make a decision. So I think I would expect that this, over the next couple of years, before it goes in, before, uh, things are fully implemented, we'd probably be, I would expect that we'd be revisiting this potentially again, because we're going to be getting more information and, um, this quote unquote option two has not been, uh, fully adopted by FEMA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo both Counselor Runyon and Counselor Ring's comments. And unfortunately, the consistency with, uh, federal law and everything having to do with the feds right now is a pretty slender read to lean on. I did ask Director Chandler a couple of questions I thought were useful and correct me if I'm wrong on any of these, Josh. But just to put a little bit of context, uh, to this, the number of properties that are currently in the, or that is in the floodplain, as defined by the 1984 or current maps is, uh, 210. So there's 210 properties, uh, within the current maps and 224 would be with the, um, updated maps coming out probably next year. And I read this right, uh, Josh, you think there are about 58 parcels that are in the floodplain that are currently not developed. So it's, it's, it's a number, I mean, it's not an overwhelming number, but, but they're a goodly number. And the cost of an estimate or approximate cost to folks who would want to develop in the new, uh, in the floodplain and would be required to get a habitat assessment, might be something on the order of $5,000 to $20,000, depending on the size and complexity of the proposed development. Are those all accurate?
Yeah, I'm looking again at what I, the email I sent to you. We sent out 210 notifications for the 1984 properties, 224 for the 2026 properties. But I'm seeing a note here, this was the notification that was sent. So there were actually, if there was any duplicate, if a property owner had a duplicate, maybe two, two lots side by side.
Yep.
And we would have only sent one notice because it's one property owner getting impacted. So my apologies on those numbers.
So it might be a bit, the number of properties might be a little higher.
Yeah.
The number of owners, fair enough.
But the 58, yeah, we worked with Wasco County GIS and we basically put in a layer of developed land, an undeveloped land and put that into like the floodplain and came up with the 58. And, and then also, yeah, to your point, uh, we most recently had, there's a, actually Northwest Natural is looking at, at creating a new, development out on the port right now. So they're actually in the floodplain, so they, they are the ones that actually just completed a habitat assessment. So that figure of the, it was about 5,000 for that, but it was a, it was a flat graded property. Once you start adding the complexities to it and you start tacking in, you know, topography and surveying requirements, then you're going to start looking at those higher numbers.
Fair enough. So it's, depending on the scale of development, it might be a very modest percentage increase, but it, you know, for someone building a house, it could be an obnoxious additional amount. On the other hand, situation we find ourselves in is, it's a, uh, very little carrot and, and lots of stick, right? The, the threat from FEMA, should they ever come turn the lights on, of removing our municipality or removing our, the properties in our jurisdiction, uh, from eligibility to get national flood insurance. That could affect some high percentage of those properties, so 100 or 200 properties. Feel like we're a little bit over the barrel on this.
Also ring, did you have another question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, out of curiosity, um, how, how does our action and this proposed, this, this proposed action this evening match or, or map with other communities, other affected communities?
Yeah, thanks, uh, good question. I haven't kept too up to speed with others. I think there's really a right, you know, a wide array of responses from different communities. I have heard in working with Barry Elsner that they are encouraging all of their, all of the cities that they work with to adopt by the deadline, but they know that multiple communities won't. Um, I do know that, that Wasco County is actually delaying their action. It will actually, there was, there was a little bit of, I think, we were talking about a possible timeline extension. There was a little bit of mix up, there was not a timeline extension for the pick them. There was something else to do with National Flood Insurance Program. But the county has actually, um, county staff, uh, recommended to the Board of County Commissioners, to delay the hearing until November. The goal here is that, you know, hopefully in the period of time, there'll be some kind of injunction or settlement that may change these requirements. But at this point, yeah, they are, um, they, they mentioned it's, it's a little bit longer than they typically push a meeting out for, but they are stated here that they are going to be moving it to the November meeting for consideration.
Okay, so they've, so Wasco County themselves have taken sort of a sit wait approach.
Correct. Yep.
Thanks.
I was also wondering about the county is, last I heard, that's like two week old information, I mean.
Yeah, so this just came in last Monday. So there was, yeah, the question was about the timeline, where there was like a timeline extension. I clarified that there wasn't a timeline extension, but they have decided to, um, reschedule the, their second hearing. It's already been heard once, they decided to reschedule it for November 5th. And it states here that, uh, they agreed with this recommendation. And if there's no, still no civil resolution or the matter hasn't been heard through injunction or settlement, they're likely to move forward with a vote at that time, but it is, has been moved to November.
I'm, uh, familiar with the term known at loss when it comes to wetlands. Concept the same for, or for, um, floodplains?
Similar to, yep.
And I guess I'm really, I'm very concerned about the fact that FEMA hasn't responded at all. Of course, they haven't responded.
Right.
You noticed them and they were told, you, you said in your staff report, we did not receive any comments from FEMA or DLCD.
Correct.
Did we receive anything in writing that said they had no comments?
Nothing. Yeah, nothing at all. Typical with the DLCD platform though, like I said, um, whenever there's a land use matter that's being considered, you put it into DLCD's portal, they're really only going to read. matter that's being considered, you put it into D L C D's portal, they're really only going to read, you you're going to receive an automated response, which we did receive, and they're only going to be reaching out if they have real concerns with it. So uh but FEMA, on the other hand, no response. This was all uh, like I said, information was changing. Last year, right after July, our our team sat through every basically chance we had to sit on in these seminars, these webinars. Um they they realized the additional bandwidth they needed to take on. They hired a consulting firm to mediate these meetings to just just to hold these meetings. Um they were letting us know going forward, come whatever date it was that they said you can reach out to us with any question, this technical assistance website. Um we've overused it maybe because we're constantly reaching out to them and it started off getting those automated responses uh to nothing, you know, so this most recent, yeah, we haven't heard a thing from them since.
Last question has to do with, uh you mentioned the flooding resulting from tunnel being set second street. You know who's responsible for clearing that debris out of there? It's not the city.
I think it's the core. I think Public Works would be able to answer that for me. Um but I think there's a partnership with that tunnel between the core, the railroad and or not, maybe.
Is um clear right now, do we know? Is the tunnel clear of debris? Yes, I have another concern.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, was there an answer to that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ben. Um said that the Corps of Engineers is his knowledge tunnel is clear of debris.
Okay, thanks.
So one good thing that has come out of the modeling, um like it's talked about, there's two separate things. We're talking about the flood code. Put it aside for a second. The modeling, um the team, I think I mentioned to all of you in your briefings. Uh the team that's responsible for the map update has been great. They've been really great to work with. Um myself and the Deputy Public Works Director met with some of their engineers a little while ago to specifically look at that tunnel. So they provided us with information that in the event that we want to explore the idea of modeling a new tunnel and a crazy expensive project, but in the event that we were to look at upsizing or modeling a new tunnel, we do have the information now that could help us, you know, maybe it would be less of a cost to the city for hiring a consultant. Um so that team has been has been really great to work with, but it's just a matter of, you know, now it's when the map updates are coming, then the other thing the city needs to consider after these two big milestones is our, you know, maybe steps on, you know, floodplain mitigation. What are some of those steps to to try to bring down the impacts to our property owners once um once these maps are updated and just to avoid any future issues like the ninety-six flood?
There were the back in ninety-six, not all of us were here, but some of us were and and there were reports that uh nobody really looked at that tunnel. It was clogged with debris and with logs and limbs and all manner of things which created that. If it is clear and we are actually getting that checked or whatnot, I I don't see the problem again. I think the tunnel seems to be sufficient enough. It had been for many, many decades until that flood, but it was debris that was never cleared from there that caused the issue.
Yeah, so the the flood mapping, um the flood mapping takes into account zero obstructions whatsoever.
Right.
Um and what they're saying is effectively, I would say on a on a normal flow, that tunnel can handle what? Three thousand C F S, a flood event is fifty-five hundred coming to that point. So just in this modeling work, they found out that the pipe is is undersized what it needs to be. But I
Yeah, and I and I was just gonna add that, you know, even if the tunnel's clear right now, in a big event, there's so much debris upstream um that will work its way down and that's outside of the city, you know, clear up going out Mill Creek that there's the possibility that the flood or the 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 tunnel will get plugged, um even if it's clear right now.
I was actually on a team that walked in the water pulling debris out upstream.
Well, to the extent that the Corps of Engineers uh recognizes that it's their responsibility and also um the extent that thing clogs up and causes a lot of problems for a city, perhaps a letter to them periodically mining of medicine. Yeah. It prevents some something catastrophic.
Yeah, and and it also is the railroad um and in working with with them as well.
Anything, any other questions for the staff? Okay, does anyone from the public wish to offer relevant testimony or ask relevant questions on this matter? We're up to three minutes. If so, please state your name and address for the record. Please come forward, anybody? That's call. Records show that no one has responded and wishes to uh to give public testimony. Do the counselors feel they have enough information to make a decision?
I've I've one more question, if I may. I should have covered this first time around, but at any rate, one of the comments uh we received or maybe the comment received was something to the effect that the new regulations would make properties unbuildable. Do you comment on that, Director Chandler?
Yeah, um buildability and developability is always a really a difficult um thing to to determine. Um I think there is always a level of now how your your money and the resources that go into it um can probably take some properties that may seem undevelopable and you could probably still develop on them. Um so that's that's my my way of maybe skirting the answer because I don't necessarily have a concrete answer to say whether or not properties uh can be developed on. I do think that the new flood requirements will put a lot um you'll have to throw a lot more resources at a property to develop on them.
Thank you.
The counselors feel they have enough information to make a decision at this point?
I don't feel like we have so much
Okay.
vision that we can.
Ready for deliberations? And with that, I am closing the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'd like to uh move to adopt General Ordinance number two five dash one four one four. An ordinance amending the Dow's comprehensive plan and Title Ten of the Dow's municipal code to comply with FEMA's two thousand twenty-four pre-implementation pre-implementation compliance measures, mandate and updated floodplain development standards based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the Agenda Staff Report by Title Only as presented.
I will reluctantly second that.
By Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Richardson. Adopted ordinance ending our municipal code to comply with FEMA's compliance measures and mandates updated floodplain development standard.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh. But I forgot, didn't you? Please proceed.
General Ordinance number twenty-five dash one four one four. An ordinance amending the Dow's comprehensive plan and Title Ten of the Dow's municipal code to comply with FEMA's two thousand twenty-four pre-implementation compliance measures, mandate and updated floodplain development standards.
Has been so moved and so seconded. Any more discussion? Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just personally speaking for my own personal self, I would say nothing would give me greater pleasure than putting a finger in the eye of the federal government right now, but uh the reason I'm supporting this is because I'm not willing to play chicken with one hundred or two hundred or some hundred uh odd number of properties and their flood insurance. Like, we're kind of stuck.
Yeah, I think that's well said. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Harry's honestly.
Thank you.
Them eleven A. Iteration of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract related to the Federal Street Plaza project, Mr. Klebs.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um included in your packet is a staff report for this uh action item. Um a brief summary, the council uh is very familiar with this project, but for uh our extensive audience here and maybe uh zooming in online. Uh the Federal Street Plaza Project is a concept project where the city uh which is moving forward with uh will execute or will will vacate Federal Street from Second to First Street, uh create a parcel or parcels of property uh to allow for the development of a plaza or gathering space in the center or heart of our downtown um uh readily accessible to the businesses along Second and Third Street. The First Street parking lots, the public parking lots we have along First Street. And with the completion of the First Street streetscaping project, we'll also connect the heart of our downtown to the Union Street underpass, uh the Riverfront Trail and the great uh amenity that that is along to along with the State Trail uh at the crossroads near the Discovery Center where the Riverfront Trail ends and the historic Columbia River Highway uh bike trail begins. Uh we've completed uh much of the necessary groundwork to to uh develop and promote and engage the community in the creation of a concept design uh using uh the services of Walker Macy. And the item uh for consideration this evening is to continue engaging Walker Macy uh for the next phase of services. Um this process has been very robust with the establishment of an ad hoc committee made up of community citizens, city councilors, uh downtown business owners. We've had significant engagement with the public. Through our website, social media posts, a very well attended uh open house. And we are hoping to have a pretty aggressive timeline here um as kind of shown or detailed somewhat on page one fifty-seven uh of your packet, uh which was a part of the proposal from Walker Macy. We're hoping to uh push this project project along in alignment with the First Street streetscaping project. And when they are planning or that project is planned to go out to bid, hopefully both of those projects would hit the construction season uh in two thousand twenty-seven. Um First Street project's been around a little bit longer than the Plaza, so they're a little bit ahead of us. Um and uh we're the ad hoc committee in particular uh is is uh hopeful to see this project uh move forward uh and execute those projects at the same time, uh hopefully mitigate some of the construction impacts during that time to the downtown business core and uh maybe get some efficiencies. Uh so to push that forward, uh we solicited a proposal from Walker Macy, as I mentioned, who is the previous consultant engaged uh with the city for the concept renderings. And we asked for a proposal, a draft timeline and other information for the next phase. Uh this would include the development of thirty percent and ninety percent in complete bid documents, assistance uh through the bidding process, construction and closeout. Um that proposal uh was presented to the ad hoc committee for their review. And they recommend recommended the approval of the scope of work, uh while staff work to revise uh some of the final information and negotiate a final uh has some cost refinement uh based on those revisions. Um as the council knows, you know, all of these procurements that the city uh executes uh is subject to the provisions of our contracting, uh public contracting code and our local contractor view board. And so in particular here, in this case, I want to go through some of the details of how uh this uh this uh contract was solicited and how we may enter enter into it um under those rules. Um first and foremost, uh the Attorney General's rules, the model rules for consultant selection authorizes the city to directly appoint a consultant uh continuing a project if the services consist or related to a professional services for the same project that has been previously studied. So this is a continuation of the Walker Macy Macy contract from before. The city's selection procedure applicable to selection of the concept uh the consultant at the time of the selection um uh for that previous contract. And we have to make certain written findings, which is the main point tonight. And so on the second page of my staff report, uh there are three key components there. The professional and related services now required here um have already been provided to the city through Walker Macy uh through a professional services agreement for design and engineering services for the project. Um we engaged Walker Macy for the conceptual design work. The project was an at an exploratory phase at the time. Uh we didn't know if the project would move forward, would materialize or what the cost the cost would be. And third rule I A declares the city's policy is to utilize public contracting and purchasing practices and methods to maximize the efficient use of our resources and purchasing powers of the city and to push a project forward. So if the council adopts the proposed findings uh uh on the second and third and fourth page of the staff report, which I'll briefly go through, Oregon law authorizes the city to award this professional services agreement to Walker Macy for the project uh through the process that we followed. And so finding number one, entering a professional services agreement for professional related services with Walker Macy for the project will promote the efficient use of public funds and resources and result in substantial cost savings to the city. Um this is supported by a number of bullet points underneath. Um first and foremost, Walker Macy's familiar with this project. We're familiar with their team. They've demonstrated their competency competency and ability through the concept design phase. Um the work product has been extremely efficient and successful, uh which uh suggests that future efforts will be likewise. Um they've successfully completed numerous other projects in Oregon and Washington and and given them the experience to push this project forward efficiently and effectively. Um we won't have to go through a full-on R F P process with the associated costs uh and time delays. Uh there should be savings in the Walker Macy proposal from not having to go through an R F P process. And as I alluded to in the my opening, the time efficiencies and their familiarity with the project uh allows us to move the project forward under this tight timeline that is uh detailed uh later on in their proposal. Um ideally hitting the bid season this uh uh fall, winter and early spring will allow us to uh have uh more competitive bids at the construction season for two thousand twenty-six and uh not delay the project potentially into two thousand twenty-seven with associated cost increases. Um the second finding is entering a P S A for perverse uh professional and related services will walk at Walker Macy protects the integrity of the public contracting process and the competitive nature of procurement. Um as I mentioned again previously, uh we used a formal selection procedure to first um award the conceptual design contract to Walker Macy. Exempting award of this contract from competitive solicitation and negotiating directly with Walker Macy is not anticipated to encourage any kind of favoritism or diminish competition. Um in particular, since the alternative would be a qualification-based process. Um finally, I also wanted to note that um uh continuing our relationship with Walker Macy also continued also builds upon and supports consistent public engagement that Walker Macy has been gay involved with already with key community stakeholders, uh the downtown uh business district overall, uh but most notably the Urban Renewal Agency and the Craig's Building Owner who are uh adjacent to the project site. And the budget allocation or budget implications or the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget includes an allocation of just under five million for this project, four point nine and change. Uh this allocation does rely on several anticipated grants that have yet to be awarded. Uh we did submit for a Travel Oregon Award on the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which uh we were not successful in. But we do have an Oregon Parks and Rec Department um competitive grant application in for one million dollars to support the project. Um the mayor and I will be going down to Salem to present uh this project um to the review committee in person uh to put our best foot forward to secure those funds. Um but with the allocation and the the funds that we currently have, there is sufficient resources to support this contract. Um the contract amount is six hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. So it is a very um significant amount, no matter how you slice it. Um but this is the the one of the uh first real steps in moving uh this project forward to uh final design, construction and to, uh, final design, construction, and actually making it, uh, into a reality. And so staff's recommendation is to adopt the proposed findings as detailed in my staff report and authorize the city manager to enter into a PSA, uh, for professional and related services with Walker Macy. The Plaza, Federal Street Plaza project in an amount not to exceed 619,212 as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that may, you may have, uh, the scope of work, timeline and team is detailed in Walker Macy's proposal, uh, along with the contract. But I also know, uh, uh, clearly that, uh, we have some counselors and the mayor himself who are also involved in the ad hoc committee and would welcome any additional comments, uh, from you as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so with what Matthew just said, uh, I'd like to recognize Counselor Dan Richardson and Counselor Ben Ring. We're serving on this committee. We've been meeting almost a year now. I think, uh, it'll be one year next month. We've had about 13 meetings, including a public, public meeting at the Hubridge Brewery. It's very successful. So with that, I also agree with Matthew that Walker Macy has been a pleasure to work with up to now. They've been competent, professional, very, very experienced in this kind of work. And they've delivered everything that they've said would, it would deliver on time. I for one have been very pleased with their, uh, service to the city. That any, uh, any questions or comments for the city manager? Well, um, Counsel Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Matthew, um, I wanted to make sure that the proposal for this contract is not, uh, is not going to, is not intended to increase the overall estimated cost of First Street Plaza. This would be, in other words, this would be a part of those costs that we would have expected. We would, we would have to be doing this work anyways or hiring somebody to do this work.
Yes, to move, to move this project forward to, you know, final design and, and, and going through the bidding process is something, and under the timeline and the, the milestone objectives that we have, certainly having the services of Walker Macy, uh, is critical to that process. And if, if, I, I don't know if I picked up maybe another question you had. The, the budgeted amount, um, in the fiscal year 25, 26 budget is, um, 4.9 million and change. And the cost of this contract is included in that total cost. So it's not 4.9 plus 600 and change. It's part of that.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to make sure we put out there. Thanks.
Other questions, comments? For a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to adopt the proposed findings presented herein and authorize the city manager to enter professional services agreement or professional and related services with Walker Macy for the Federal Street Plaza project in an amount not to exceed 619,212 dollars as presented.
Or second?
McLaughlin was second.
Moved by Counsel Richardson and seconded by Counsel McLaughlin to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Walker Macy. The other comments? Those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries unanimously.
One final comment, Mr. Mayor, as an update to the council unrelated to the contract itself, but related to the Federal Street Plaza is, uh, the council took action a couple of meetings ago to vacate, uh, Federal Street. The relevant documents for that vacation have been shared with both the Urban Renewal Agency and the Craig's Building Owner. And I touched base with the Craig's Building Owners representative today. And all indications are from them is that they are supportive of the concept, supportive of the vacation. And, uh, we should have those, uh, documents executed shortly. Um, knock on wood. Just make sure it's all in line. So thank you very much.
Any other business to come before the city council?
I would like to just make one note very briefly. That is, I think it would be worth a conversation, um, between ourselves to revisit and just reconsider our council rule 3E, which is an August recess. We have a lot of business going on in our city and I'm wondering if maybe, uh, the days of just taking August off are something we want to just reconsider at some point.
Okay. For the staff will take that in. The other business to come before the council?